Evening. It is seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
Slater, here. Supervisor Lesbrance, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please rise if possible for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance is in the United States of America. In the republic of Georgia stands one nation under God. The end of all the wars and the justice far.
Approval of agenda. Is there discussion or a motion for tonight's approval of the agenda?
So move.
Support.
A motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Article four, presentations. We have no formal presentations this evening. However, we do have two quick updates. First, trustee Nordhook will provide us with an update on the status of the fire station number one project. And then second, in response to residents' questions about the new COVID-19 requirements and restrictions, manager Swayze will explain what changes and restrictions the township has made in the last 14 months, and also explain what basis and authority those changes were made upon. Trustee Nordhook?
Just wanted to give a quick update as to how we're proceeding with the fire station. We want to do this in a three-part series, so we're going to have a bid process for architects which went out this week. So multiple architect firms should be bidding on doing the design and the print. Then we are going to move to the next step where we're going to take bids for contractors to submit their bids, cost and experience in the process, how many fire stations they've built or whatever, but importantly, their cost and experience. And then we're going to have bids go out for an owner's rep. So somebody to watch out for our best interest as Cascade residents, so that we don't have one company doing everything with no oversight. So we're trying to be responsible. It's going to take a little bit longer, but everything should be rocking and rolling within a few months. So hopefully, we just want to make sure that the firemen understand you're getting your new fire station. Have a little patience. It's a big, it's a big expensive job, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Manager Swayze?
Thank you, trustee Nordhock. I just wanted to make one comment on that, so the RFP is not actually issued yet. So the board actually has to vote on issuing the RFP. That'll come in front of the board at the next meeting. But everything else was discussed at the Peace Act meeting, so I just didn't want anybody to think that they could start bidding on it right away because it's not developed yet. So there was a couple of questions raised by resident at the April 14th, 2021 Township Board Meeting. Specifically, they requested information regarding the following. Whose decision was it to enact the stringent lockdown and mask mandates for our township businesses and township buildings and offices? What research and expert sources were received? And what scientific and medical expert research and local resident input was consulted when making emergency cited orders and mandates? And were there any peer-reviewed research studies that were reviewed? So first, to talk about the lockdown and mask mandates. So the statewide response to the COVID-19 pandemic is dictated by a pair of emergency orders and emergency rules promulgated at the state level, not at the local level. In particular, there are two orders that continue to dictate Cascade Township's response as an organization, and those are the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity/Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration Emergency Rules for Coronavirus 2019. Those were filed on October 14th, 2020, and are currently enacted through October 14th, 2021. The other document is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Emergency Order under MCL 333-2253. That's the simple title, is a gatherings and fast mace or face mask order, which is filed and updated on April 16th, 2021, and is currently in effect through May 24th, 2021. Do want to note that Cascade Township is not responsible for enacting or enforcing any of the aforementioned rules or orders on township businesses or residents. Rather, Cascade Township as an organization is responsible for complying with the orders, just as any other business or organization would be responsible for. So there's a couple of rules in each of these documents that have kind of dictated our response. So Rule Four in the MIOSHA, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the MIOSHA emergency rules is the basis for the Cascade Township COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan. So any organization that is open for workers or for the public is required to have a COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan. We've developed ours in accordance with Rule Four. Rule Six requires basic health screeners for any employees coming into a place of business if they work in person, and we have done that and implemented that. And Rule Seven is the basis for the mask requirements for entrance into township hall and for employees. And in terms of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Emergency Order, what's really changed for us in the past month is Rule Two C, which is the exception to the indoor gatherings rule. So up until when this was enacted on March 31st, 2021, public meetings were not exempt from the indoor gathering rule, which meant that our indoor gatherings could only consist of 25 people from not more than three families. And given the attendance at our meetings, that wasn't possible, so we continued to have virtual meetings. On October 31st, 2021, they added exemption C15, which exempted public meetings or meetings of a public body from the indoor gathering requirements, which allows us to have indoor meetings. Subsequently, Kent County passed a local state of emergency, which is in enactment until June 30th as well, which would allow any members of the public body, you guys are all in attendance, but if you wanted to attend remotely, you could still attend remotely as long as there's a local emergency order through the end of the year. As far as the other questions, the research, the expert sources, the medical basis, the resident input, the peer-reviewed studies, we're not, we're not responsible for the enactment of the MIOSHA emergency rules or the MDHHS emergency order. We're only responsible for complying with it as an organization, and as such, not aware of what research, expert sources, medical basis or other input was utilized when those organizations developed those rules and orders. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Article five, public comments. Please limit comments to three minutes, and anyone wishing to speak is welcome to step up to the podium, or Assistant Manager Fass can bring the microphone over to you. And following in-person comments, we can move on to anyone remote. Thank you. Stephanie Fatt or Ms. Fass?
This is just for items on the agenda now, right? And they, at the end, will be public comments on any topic.
We can see, I mean, it's up to my discretion. Right now, that doesn't seem to be a problem, so.
If there are any participants joining virtually that would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand and your microphone will be unmuted. If you're joining us via telephone, please press star nine and your hand will be raised.
Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak right now?
Hi, I'm Judy Kenny, 5600 Alaska.
Good evening.
And I was told that we would be discussing the SAD tonight again, again. And I'd like to draw attention to the fact that I don't think much attention has been paid to the 10% possible increase. If it starts out at $300, and then if they were to add the 10% each year for 15 years, it ends up people paying over $9,500 instead of $4,500. And I did see that in the response that we received to our thing about from the lawyers. It's not 4,500. It could very possibly climb. Now, they aren't going to do it every year, but it could happen, so it could really increase. I just wanted that brought up.
Thank you. And manager Swayze will be updating us with the status of those special assessors later on in manager comments also.
We do have a virtual commenter, which is Scott Van Solkema.
Hello?
Welcome. Please proceed.
Hi there. Since Supervisor Lesparents said that we can go off topic of things that aren't on the agenda, I was calling to contact about the Church on the Hill property, which I am in favor of the township buying that only if they were to sell 2,800 Thornapple River. That is a vacant lot that the township paid several hundred thousand dollars for that is currently just sitting useless. And I don't understand what the plan is for the township for that. It's approximately 10 parcels away from Cascade where there's several businesses on the corner, and if they want to add that onto the park that's on the other side of Cascade Road, I just don't understand what the, what the purpose is of owning this very highly desirable piece of property on the Thornapple River without getting any tax revenue. Like, I just want to know what the plan is for that, that chunk of property that the township's probably paid over $300,000 for, bulldozed the house, put up a fence, and have to mow the lawn now. Just that, that's my comment. I'm in for the buying the church on the hill if they sell the 2,800 Thornapple River property to help pay for that, for that green space. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have another virtual comment from Carol T. Meyer.
Hi, Carol T. Meyer. We live on Beeler Drive. Because the man before me brought up the Church on the Hill, I would like to make a comment on that. The property is way overpriced. I don't see the township paying $800,000 for that property. If it was half that, maybe. Pine Ridge is just within a mile. Kids can play there. I would like to see the township's focus on the new fire station. That's where the need is. That's what was number one in the survey. We have a bunch of beautiful parks. Let's use those. Save our money. Focus on the fire station. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands at this time, Supervisor Lesbrands.
Thank you. That concludes this portion of public comment. Article six, approval of consent agenda. Is there discussion or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change to the April 14th minutes. There was a numbering error on the March 24th minutes, which I didn't catch and caused a numbering error in these minutes. So in the April 14th minute, item of new business 36 becomes 37, 37 becomes 38, 38 becomes 39, and I think now we're square. So with that change, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. And I would just like to clarify that in the March 24th, 2021 corrective minutes that are up for tonight's approval, that item regarding the rapid contract only referenced or was only voted on the 28th Street route. The second route is up for board approval and discussion tonight. There a motion or further discussion? Second?
Second.
Motion by?
Or by McDonald. Or second, a second by McDonald. I'll support for approval.
The motion by clerk Slater to approve the consent agenda, taking into account the numbered item changes she referenced and she will remember, and also clarifying that the 324 board minutes referenced only the 28th Street bus contract. Seconded by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Article seven, financial actions. Is there a motion or board discussion?
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion to approve by trustee Kessel, supported by clerk, excuse me, treasurer Pierce, to approve the financial. I think it's a lateral move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Article eight, unfinished business. Item 025, 2021. Kent County Designated Assessor Interlocal Agreement. Managers, is there a motion to untable this item?
Make a motion to take it off the table.
Support.
Motion by trustee Kessel to remove this item from table, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So in 2018, the state of Michigan legislature passed Public Act 660 of 2018, commonly referred to as the Property Assessing Reform Act. In its simplest form, Public Act 660 provides a statutory framework to ensure proper assessing in order to guarantee the highest quality of assessments for taxpayers as long as local, as well as local units of government. However, one of the most complex provisions within the act is the designated assessor. With the current state of Michigan Audit of Minimum Assessing Requirements, we'll refer to that as AMAR process, the statute provides for an initial AMAR and a corrective action plan to be approved by the state tax commission. The statute then provides for follow-up review to be conducted in accordance with the approved action plan. If after the follow-up review, the local unit remains non-compliance, each local unit has two options. The first option, the local unit can choose to employ or contract a new assessor of record at the advanced or master level. The second option would be to contract with the designated assessor for the county to serve as the assessor of record. So Kent County has gone through the RFP process to select a Kent County Designated Assessor. As dictated by the act, the county must now enter an interlocal agreement with the majority of the local units of government. Once the agreement is finalized, it is sent to the state tax commission for final approval. The state tax commission is responsible for determining if the individual named as the designated assessor is capable of ensuring they can achieve and maintain substantial compliance for any local unit that contracts with them. I will note that in order for the county to successfully enter into the interlocal agreement, over 50% of the local units have to agree and sign the option. So I attached some documents in your packet for review. There's the proposed interlocal agreement and designated assessor contract. There's a property assessing reform information document that was published by the state of Michigan. There's the RFP that Kent County issued for the designated assessor. I also included a copy of Public Act 660 of 2018. So the RFP process, which was done with input from the Kent County Supervisors Association and the Kent County Assessors Association, the county selected Lori Spencer, doing business as Northeast Michigan Assessing LLC, as the Kent County Designated Assessor. So Lauren currently serves as the Equalization Director in Leona County and has over 43 years of assessing administration experience. So the initial term of the contract is five years. If the township were to use the services or need to use the services of designated assessor, the general cost would be $30 per parcel as set by the March Board Review. Other various costs for services would apply as well, can be found on page seven of the document. So though required by Public Act 660, it is highly unlikely that the township would ever be in a position to need to utilize a designated assessor. And in fact, there is no Kent County local unit right now that will need to use a designated assessor during the term of this contract. So the term for this contract is five years. All the Kent County local units passed their AMAR in December of 2020. So this contract will actually be expired even before there would be, that there won't, there generally wouldn't be a need, but there could possibly be a need. However, the county is still required to have a designated assessor per the act, even though the need for it has passed for the next five years. Because of the significant cost, you'll remember that we tabled this at a previous meeting. In the interim, I was able to interact with a majority of the local governments, local units of government in Kent County to understand what they were doing. Nobody was particularly happy with the cost. However, given the highly unusual circumstance that would have to occur in order for somebody in Kent County to use it, the bids that the county got from people interested in doing it were fairly limited because those people that put in bids are going to have to put themselves in a position to do that work, knowing that there's a good chance that they'll never get any payments because they won't actually have to be used. So you have to be prepared, but won't actually be used. And with that, a majority of the local units of government in Kent County have already signed on, and I haven't talked to anybody specifically that has said that they're not going to sign on. They have either signed on or are in the process of considering it right now. So there's no cost associated with the township approving the interlocal agreement for the designated assessor, unless we get into a situation where we would actually have to use them. Should the township be in a position to need the services, the cost of the township would be $30 per parcel, the township for fiscal year 2021 pre-border review at 9,499 parcels. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
There a motion or discussion?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement.
Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve item 031, 2021.
I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Excuse me. Can you repeat that?
I just had a comment, boss.
Oh, and I just cut you off. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's all right.
Sorry about that.
I just want to make the comment that this township has gone above and beyond with maintaining quality assessors. We take pride in it. We take pride in our community, and we take pride in the ability to challenge our assessment within the township if need be. I don't foresee any need for an outside assessor, especially somebody from Traverse City area. However, now that I've said my piece, I shall be still. Thank you.
Trust, or manager Swayze, what would have to happen in layman's terms for this to kick in?
Yeah, certainly. So first thing would have to happen would be that we would have to fail our AMAR. So not only is that very highly unlikely to happen, we've gone through two of them since we've been here, and we haven't had them even make any comments on things we need to change. So I agree wholeheartedly with trustee Shipley, but they would have to come in, do our audit, we'd have to fail our AMAR. We fail our AMAR and they issue a corrective action plan. So that's issued to the township board, because you guys are ultimately responsible for the assessments to let you know what you have to do to correct. And then the board has a, the township has a long time to correct. So the state tax commission will eventually come back and redo the AMAR to see if we've complied with all of the items in the correction, corrective action plan. If we refuse or cannot comply, then we have two options. So the first option would be for us to basically blow up our assessing department and start over. So we could choose any assessor or assessing company that we wanted, as long as they're qualified by the state, and the qualification means they have to have an advanced or master level assessing certificate. So if all of that happened and we could not or refuse to find a new assessor, then the designated assessor would be assigned to us by the state and the county. So it's a, there'd have to be a lot of bad, bad things that would happen before we'd have to use it. But again, going back to the state statutes, it's just something that needs to be implied to comply with.
Okay, thank you. Going back, motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the Kent County Designated Assessor Interlocal Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May. Just for the heck of it, may.
Motion carry. Next item, 031, 2021, Brownfield Redevelopment Amended Bylaws. Is there a motion to untable this item?
So move. Or?
Motion by trustee Kessel to untable this item, supported by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Is there board discussion before Ms. Corhorn answers questions?
You know, I'd like to comment on this. I I wanted this tabled last time because of the bylaws and the language in here, just here to give the authority too much power. And I'm looking at the new amended, and I'm going to say that I'm not happy with the amended bylaws. It looks as though this authority could issue $20 million in bonds without approval of this board, and I'm not in favor of that. Plus, they also have the power to amend their own bylaws without this board, which to me leaves a little room for some under-the-table stuff, I guess I would say. I'm not happy with the way this is. I would like to table this again, make a new motion to table this again, and have our new law firm review these bylaws and this Brownfield redevelopment.
I would second. Trustee Shipley?
I have to agree with Timmy. Everything that this board and this township has done, it's had a set of checks and balances on. Everything that we've set up ultimately comes before the board, the representatives of the residents, for final approval or disapproval. To allow an unchecked group to make decisions of that magnitude, I'm uneasy with. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd add specifically the, as far as the checks and balances not being equal at this point, while we're establishing this new authority with potentially a lot of decision-making and financial decision-making down the road in Cascade, this authority under these current bylaws, as written, appears to have the unilateral authority to incur debt without the township's approval. But as written right now, the township is not required necessarily to, it's on the hook automatically to back that debt, but also it's not required, it's approval to incur it. So I would feel more comfortable if our new council also reviewed it and compared it to some state recommended bylaws that were previously put out and that were online. I think those bylaws were tighter and better written than what we've got on our second time around, so. There's further discussion, trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to add, I had some similar concerns. You go to page 160, under the contracts, loans, checks, deposits and investments. The authority board can also employ and retain consultants as considered necessary by the authority, and all contracts must be approved by the authority board. It doesn't say the township board. And that was a big, some big notes that I had. So if maybe Sandra can clarify, maybe I'm reading too much into it. Maybe all of us are. So I had some similar concern.
I think the legal, the legal questions aren't quite clear enough for this board. Especially given the potential financial decisions that it's going to be making.
We have had a motion and support for a table, so we can't have any discussion, but I would have liked to have heard. I had some questions. I raised some before the meeting that got addressed. But I would have liked the attorney that reviewed them to have an opportunity to address our questions before we tabled.
Okay, can we do that before we vote for the table?
We have it.
Yeah, you're not supposed to have discussion after a table.
We took it off the table.
Yep. And Timmy motioned to table it again, and John supported it. So now we got a motion to support and table new, according to Robert Schules, you can't have discussion. So we can't even let Sandra talk now.
And we vote not to table it? That's the only way.
First, don't we have to address the motion that's up currently?
Motion on the floor is to table, you can vote on that motion, vote no.
Then we can, then we can have discussion.
So it's a motion by trustee Nordhook to table this item, seconded by trustee Shipley. All in favor? Let's, to be safe, clerk Slater, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Kessel.
No.
Trustee Nordhook.
I, I want to leave it on the table.
Treasurer Pierce.
No.
Trustee McDonald.
No.
Trustee Shipley.
Or fix it, I guess I would say no.
Clerk Slater.
No.
Clerk Slater, no, it's Roger Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carry. Oh. Is there board discussion, further board discussion or a motion?
I would like to have Sandra address these issues of the changes that were made. Uh, to us before I can ask any intelligent questions.
Thank you. So just really quick, um, we did have some clarifications that requested at the March twenty-fourth, um, township board meeting. And, um, we did send those back to our legal, uh, council, Matt Zimmerman, um, from Barnum. And, uh, he did address those in these bylaws. And also included in the packet was an email from supervisor Lesbrunz, um, with some questions, uh, which he reviewed and. Um, addressed those comments also with clarifications and or changes. So. Um, there's, there was in the packet, there was, um. Your packet has the new, uh, updated bylaws, uh, Ben sent out an email yesterday with a clarification on some language. And then that language, uh, really was put in there to comply with the state statute, which talks about, um. Authority board members, uh, being appointed by the supervisor and then approved by the township board. So that language, um, complies with the state statute that is in your packets, uh, that's on your computer screen tonight. Um, I did see a typo under treasure where the authority board, uh, last week appointed, um. An authority board treasurer, who is not the township treasurer, it's actually the deputy treasurer, but the language in the bylaw should read, um, appoint. A, an authority board treasurer. So, uh, there's a typo under number six, article four there. Um, as far as, um, any other questions, Matt Zimmerman is with us tonight via Zoom. He could probably answer those questions, uh, better than I can. So.
I, I'd like him to address the issue of the, I, I, I agree the, uh. It sounded like the authority had too much power without board approval. And I wonder if Matt can address how that was handled or if it was. Because I, I saw, uh, a comment in there that said. Um, he assumed that, uh, well, he, I don't know whether he would use the word assumed. I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he did say something about the board. Uh, again, had the authority, but I want him to comment on Timmy's questions and Tom's if he can. Where'd Sandra go? Can we, can we have him address those?
Yes. So the one comment I heard was the Brownfield Authority Board. Um, selling twenty million dollars of bonds without township approval and the, the, the act. Doesn't provide for that and doesn't provide for liability for the township. Unless the township has authorized the sale of those bonds. So the, the township can't pledge its full faith and credit without the township board. Um, adopting a resolution of that extent. So that, that just wouldn't happen.
How broad is for cause when removing a member from the board?
It's as broad as the courts, broader or narrow as the courts define it. And that's on a case by case basis.
And the way as written, it appears that the director has the unilateral, or unilateral, the director who's a staff member has the unilateral authority. Or at least it doesn't specify that any appointed. I guess the, the staff person who's the director, but not an actual member, has the authority over the agenda to set the agenda. It doesn't reference anything about. Members.
Well, references that the members have an opportunity to amend it. Um, before it's adopted and it has to be adopted by the authority board members.
I guess my concern is when I compared it to the one that the state had put out back in two thousand eleven as a, for reference, it just seemed. I would feel more comfortable if, um, a second set of legalized reviewed it before we pass it. I understand that Robinson Dental and the, the, the developer they're working with is anxious to get this project moving. And I think we really appreciate them wanting to come to Cascade and we'll do everything we can to speed up the process, at least personally. However, if we're going to start this Brownfield redevelopment authority that potentially has. Involved in a lot of financial decisions and in many more projects and we're starting it from the ground right now. I don't feel comfortable passing these bylaws tonight as written when there's a blatant typo in the first, first sentence. So I think it's better to err on the side of caution, make sure it's tight. That's what we've got attorneys for. This is the second time we've looked at it. So we are, give us, please restate that again.
So, uh, Susan Winslake, who is with us tonight also, uh, on Zoom, uh, who has been helping the township and the Brownfield, uh, authority through this process. Uh, stated that if the Brownfield Authority does not have bylaws in place. Uh, then the township will have to be the applicant on the grant loan application, uh, for Robinson Dental. Um, the Brownfield Authority was going to be the applicant, um, for that application. But if we don't have the bylaws, then the township would have to be the applicant, uh, for that grant loan application. Um, which is due May one.
Well, at a minimum, the bylaws as written need to clarify it, specify that the board has the authority to amend. These bylaws, which right now that doesn't contain. So if we absolutely have to, because we're putting this position tonight. That at a minimum needs to be added. Otherwise, we're stuck with what we have. Andrew Swayze?
Yeah, just a request of the board. If the decision is to table the bylaws tonight. Uh, I'd request that the board considering put together a, a ad hoc committee of both, uh, board members and B R A members. Uh, to meet with legal counsel and, and, uh, smooth out everything. Seems like it doesn't make sense to go back and forth with the two boards operating separately since they both need to approve it. Supervisor Lesbrunz, you serve both boards. Uh, so if we put two township board members and two B R A board members on that, uh, ad hoc committee. Uh, we can work out all the details before it comes back to the, the board again. So just a suggestion if you're going to table the bylaws.
Would that suggestion need to be worded into the motion tonight or?
Um, it could, it could, you can do it either, either way you want, but if, if that was the intention, I would, uh, mention that in the motion to table. Not sure if this is for Sandra or somebody I'm, I'm, so if, if we, um, approve the bylaws. So we can move forward with this grant application, which is pretty substantial to bring this, the business into Cascade for the, the dental. Um, can we just later amend them? Um, in a couple of weeks down the road.
If, if we amend them to allow us to amend them, is my understanding, my reading.
Is that, we did, is that how you'd say it, Ben? Okay.
I don't think it, it, it doesn't expressly allow the board as written to amend the bylaws. It gives that authority to the. It doesn't allow it. So to be safe, I would say that needs to be specifically added to these bylaws. And it's consistent with the, um, the, the other set of bylaws that the state has put out.
Is that a question for Matt?
Could be. I just, that's what I would feel comfortable with doing.
Y- yes, you could. Amend your resolution to, uh, amend the bylaws to include the township board's ability. To amend the bylaws, adopt that tonight, which would allow the dental. The Robinson Dental grant and loan application to be submitted in its current form. And then at subsequent meetings, you could amend the bylaws to deal with any. Issues that you believe are still present in them.
It just seems to be a, a win-win where we get. What we want, but we don't want to group up the grant application for this business, Robinson Dental wants to move here. And that's my concern, obviously, is that it's a win-win.
Thank you. Further discussion or a motion?
Not sure how to word this.
I know, I was waiting for you to take.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try. Um, and, and Matt, maybe you can help out here. So I would move to approve the bylaws. Um, with the condition that the township board can amend the bylaws in the future per our discussions tonight. And which therefore would, would, these would, would be approved so we can move forward with the grant application for Robinson Dental. But we still have the authority, the power, township board to amend the bylaws, uh, in a future meeting after. Meeting with the township board and the, uh, development and the authority together. Coming up with the change that need to be made.
Tom, would you add to that, uh, motion also that the township has the ultimate authority over. Expenditures?
Well, and the attention, and the intention is that, the, the intention is that the township board has the ultimate authority over the ex, uh, expenditures. Via the bylaws.
How about the maximum authority allowed by statute? We'll exercise, we'll get into that. Oh, yeah. Anyone want a second?
Second. Let's get it moving.
So we've got a motion by trustee McDonald to approve item zero three one, twenty twenty-one, Brownfield redevelopment authority amended bylaws. Taking into account that they need to, that the following addition needs to be, needs to be included. That the board, that this board has the express authority to amend these bylaws at any time. And to the extent allowed under statute.
Perfectly.
Seconded by trustee Shipley. Just to be safe, clerk Slater, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Nordhook. Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Roger Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carry. Thank you, Ms. Corhorn, and thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Item zero three three, twenty twenty-one, interurban transit partnership contract for Route Five, which is thirty-third and thirty-sixth Street. Otherwise known as the Rapid. Andrew Swayze?
Great, thank you. So at our March twenty-fourth township board meeting, the township board voted to approve the contracts with the interurban transit partnership. Uh, commonly referred to as the Rapid, contingent upon the downtown development authority agreeing to pay a hundred percent of the cost. At their April twentieth meeting, the D D A voted to approve the twenty-eighth street contract through September twenty, two thousand twenty-one at their cost. And is currently designing a review process for consideration of services passed September of two thousand twenty-one. So at the March twenty-fourth board meeting, the township board did not delineate the twenty-eighth street route contract from the thirty-third, thirty-sixth street route. Because the thirty-third, thirty-sixth street route is not in the D D A, the D D A is unable to fund it. Items coming back to the township board as, as it was unclear from the action taken, if the township board desired. This to go to the D D A for funding consideration, or if it was an oversight that it wasn't separated, separated and considered separately. Uh, so the township contracts with the, the Rapid, uh, to provide route-specific line hall transportation services. As well as paratransit services to individuals with disabilities that live within three quarters of a mile of the line hall designated route. So the route under consideration, also known as Route Five, uh, is on thirty-sixth street. It goes west on thirty-sixth street. North on Craft Avenue, east on thirty-third street, south on Patterson, west on thirty-sixth street. Uh, should be noted that this is unlike the twenty-eighth street route, this is not a full service route. Uh, this route has been designed specifically for the shift changes at the businesses along the, uh, the bus route. Um, so it operates during the peak periods only and there's fifteen trips daily. So for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one contract is proposed, which will go through September, the proposed cost is fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. It's calculated at two hundred and four billable hours and a contract rate of seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, so the agreement is the same, it has been approved by the township in previous years with the exception of the change in timing, uh, since it will be a partial year contract. Uh, though the contract rate is based on service hours for the line hall service, the paratransit service is included as well, no matter the usage. Uh, the paratransit service applies to any individual that qualifies for the service and lives within three quarters of a mile of the line hall route. Uh, I will note that the paratransit service for this line is less of, of a benefit for the township. Uh, than the twenty-eighth street route due to the very limited residential areas within the three-quarter mile service area of this route. Uh, as I mentioned, it's not a full service route. Uh, it operates peak periods during the week only, which is five A M. to seven thirty A M. Three thirty P M. to seven P M., uh, which equates to fifteen trips per day. Uh, so the estimated contract cost for the, uh, route is fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Uh, through April, uh, in our budget, the township has spent nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars on this, uh, service under a, uh, month-to-month scenario. Uh, and the route is paid for through the general fund and is not eligible for D D A funding. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And we've had, um, good ridership on that route. Is that true or not true?
Um, I wouldn't call it good ridership, uh, but it has been necessary ridership. Uh, again, it's designed specifically for those people that, uh, work those, uh, those shifts. Uh, and my understanding of the numbers is that, uh, we get, you know, a half dozen or so people, um, per trip, uh, that, that utilize it.
Is that the full-size bus or do they have a different size for this one?
It is a full-size bus because it's connected to more of the route. So there's a route that comes up. Uh, when it's not in service in Cascade Township, it just deadends, uh, at Patterson, turns around and goes back. Uh, and then it, when it is in service for Cascade Township, it just continues into the, into the township. Um, I will note that is part of the Rapids redesign process that they're going through right now. Uh, they're looking at, uh, on-demand, um, on-demand service, uh, more in a ride-share. Um. Kind of motif, uh, for businesses in this area, uh, because we're not part of the, uh, the Rapids. Um, core service area that's funded through the village, um, we wouldn't be eligible for that on a regular basis. But they certainly indicated that if that does get up and running, that's something that we, they'd be willing to talk to us about, uh, either to, uh, supplant. Uh, this route or, uh, enhance the route as well. So it's not designed yet, but they've cer- certainly told us that they would, uh, consider us when they're doing that.
We told them we would like that too.
Yes. I think they've heard that from multiple, multiple places.
Clerk Slater? I just have a comment about attachment A.
Yep.
Uh, there would need to be a correction as nearly as I can read this. You're going to go west on thirty-sixth. You would be going north on Patterson, east on thirty-third and south on Craft. The streets aren't right.
Okay, I will.
See what I'm saying?
Yep, I will contact with them and, and confirm. So that is going to be the route. Uh, I'll just have to confirm which way around that circle they're going.
Right, but whichever way you go, you're going to go on that street because that's the way you're going.
Yep.
Right.
When is this up for reveal again, Ben?
So it is a yearly contract. So each year the contract, uh, except for this past year because of the things you had going on with COVID. Um, is for a year, uh, and it runs with their fiscal year. So their fiscal year starts October one and ends September thirty-first. Um, they have asked, uh, all of their contract partners, uh, to make a decision for the next year. Um, by basically June fifteenth. Uh, so we're going to be reviewing this again soon. Uh, the twenty-eighth, the D D A is already, uh, heavy into figuring out what it'll look like, uh, going forward for the, the twenty-eighth street route. Um, and then I will note that there is language in the contract that allows either partner, uh, to cancel with ninety days notice. So even though it's a year contract, it's technically every day, a three-month contract.
So if they come up with this new hybrid of, uh, a call for a ride, uh, there's a chance that midstream, we can change over to that. Cool, I can handle that.
Ben, you know how many years we've had this service? Cause I remember Cascade Engineering and other employers coming in really saying how beneficial it was for them. And I think it's been over a decade. So I don't want to speak out of turn, but I can tell you that it predates the I T P. So, uh, I know I've heard a couple of people reference it before. What it was before it was the Rapid, um, and the service actually predates the creation of the, the Rapid. Yes, that's over twenty years.
Have these businesses, uh, done any contributing or any talks with them about that?
So they haven't, but I think that's a great idea, you know, as we get ready to prepare for, uh, a board decision, uh, for the next year. Um, I think that, uh, as staff, we can. prepare for a board decision for the next year. I think that as staff, we can contact them and understand a little bit better to make sure that it is their meeting their needs. And if it's not, what can be done differently and see if there is maybe some interest in some contributions there as well.
I'd move we approve. This is through September, the interurban transit partnership with the Rapid for services known as Route 5. Support.
Some motion to approve the interurban transit partnership contract for Route 5, supported or made by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article 9, new business. 040 2021 Robinson Dental Brownfield Grant Loan Application.
And I'm supervisor. If everybody read the write-up, it says that Lake Michigan Credit Union will be doing the financing. I know the Robinsons, this is not my credit, but I'd like to recuse myself. Discussion.
Thank you, trustee Kessel.
Don't want to be any clout. I can either leave or just sit here and not talk. Okay, whichever you prefer.
Earmuffs should be good for this.
Okay. I think you have to approve my motion to recuse myself.
Does that require vote, or just?
I think so, yes.
All in favor of trustee Kessel's motion to?
I second it.
Thank you.
The motion by trustee Kessel to recuse himself from this particular item, seconded by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Kessel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, part of the process for the Robinson Dental project is that the Brownfield Board, as well as the Township Board, must review and approve the grant loan application. And so the project proposal for the project was submitted to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, otherwise known as Eagle, in mid-February, and it was vetted by the state or by Eagle at the beginning of March. And late March, we received news that the request for a $478,000 grant and a $313,000 loan has been fully supported by them. And the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did review this application at their meeting on April 15. And they will be the applicant as well for this grant loan application. So really, the next step is that this proposal must be submitted to the state by May 1. Susan Winslake, who again is our consultant from Fishback and has been guiding us through this process, not only was setting up the authority but with Robinson Dental Project, has reviewed the application. And she reviewed it prior to the Brownfield Board, and she supported the application, approval of the application. So the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board reviewed it and did approve it at their April 15 meeting, and they are moving it forward to the Township Board for consideration tonight. I know we have representatives from Robinson Dental here tonight who would just like to give a brief overview of their project. We also have Susan with us tonight via Zoom, and of course, Matt is with us as well, should there be any legal questions. So.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Oh, it's up to them. They're more than welcome.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. We appreciate the time. My name is David Studjink. I am with Envirologic Technologies. I'm the environmental consultant for the Robinsons on this project and have been the principal authors of the grant and loan application. I'm sure the Robinsons would love to tell you some of this themselves, but the redevelopment of this project is occurring on a parcel of property that has been undeveloped for decades here in the in the township. It is dominated by a large contaminated soil pile, which is probably the reason nobody has developed it all these years. The Robinsons are interested in this parcel for the construction of a new two-story, 8,519-square-foot building. This would house numerous doctors and numerous patient rooms and be a real nice-looking building. They will be retaining a number of new jobs as a result of this project. Bear with me, I'm scrolling through my application for the number of jobs. And obviously, this helps clean up a contaminated piece of property as well. The grant and loan are absolutely critical components to making this project happen. You can see the expense amount there is not entirely small to make this contaminated soil go away so that we can build on it. So that is primarily what this grant and loan pays for, is the removal of contaminated soil. Allows you to have a consultant provide oversight. It pays for your grant administration costs as well. But I see it as a win-win-win. You get, we get this property cleaned up, developed. Robinson Dental moves into your township. They are projecting 35 new jobs, and these are, you know, highly skilled, well-paid positions. The investment is projected at 4.6 million. So as we get through all of the grant and loan process and repayment of that, servicing that loan, there'll be a significant bump in property taxes for the township as well. The Robinsons are established dental practice. They've been in business for nearly 20 years, well-known in the community and I think Western Michigan. And they are definitely looking forward to getting this project started. Mr. Mike Sharp is with us, too, from Sharp Construction, general contractor and has been the architect of this project. Mike, is there anything to add?
Um, thank you, David. Just that we're very excited, and we spent a significant amount of time looking for property. The Robinsons are neighbors of the Cascade community in Township, and they currently have Dr. Beth Robinson's office and south of Grand Rapids. And Dr. Scott Robinson, her husband, has his practice in Cooper'sville. They are growing, and they are state-of-the-art in all of their dental techniques and patient treatment. We are coming up on two years, and Cascade Township was their choice to be in. They want to be good community neighbors, good community partners. And as David said, without this grant and loan, that location would not be feasible. And their investment is north of $4.6 million if you factor in all of the costs. And it would clean up the site, finish the development, which is a condo development. Robinson's site houses a retention pond for the condominium itself, which includes the Goodwill Store, a beauty salon, and other properties surrounded that when the condo was originally developed. So we're excited to be part of this project. The Robinsons have pledged their faith, and we are hoping that you do the same for their investment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Nice to put a name with a face.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
Is Beth Robinson still on? Just so I, Beth Robinson was on earlier. Dr. Scott Robinson apologized, but he is coaching Little League Baseball tonight, and he said, how's that for community involvement? So David and I will speak for them.
I think we're happy to have them, and that's a great use of that. It's behind Gordon Food Services, right? And kind of?
Yes. It's actually right behind, between Gordon Food Services and behind the Goodwill Store off of Craft Avenue.
Well, thank you for the thorough explanation and your hard work on this. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Support.
The motion by clerk Slater to approve the Robinson Dental Brownfield Grant and Loan Application, supported by trustee McDonald. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 041 2021, Proposal for Consulting Services for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Welcome again, Ms. Corhorn.
Thank you very much. So last fall, we had a proposal from Fishback to assist the Township. I was setting up the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Susan Winslake, as I've mentioned a couple of times tonight, is from Fishback. She has been guiding the township through this process, as well as assisting with the Robinson Dental Brownfield application. We are close to reaching the end of that scope of work for that original proposal. And as Mike and/or David just mentioned, if the township gets the Eagle Brownfield grants and loan, then we will have to hire a third-party consultant to oversee the, not only the developers' work, but also to represent the township's interests. So the grant loan application will cover the cost of an oversight consultant, including, you know, going to township board meetings, BRA meetings, so on and so forth. So in your packet tonight is a new proposal from Fishback with a not-to-exceed fee. The not-to-exceed fee is $7,500. And I did kind of provide a list of the scope of work in the packet for you tonight. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board did review this proposal at their meeting last week on April 15. And they were very comfortable with both Susan and Roman. Roman from Fishback also has been involved a little bit in this project. But with Susan's background and experience with brownfields, and as well as her involvement with the Robinson Dental Project, the BRA Board was very comfortable approving this proposal and then moving it on to the Township Board for consideration tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Shipley?
A question. Why won't we use our own attorneys? I mean, maybe our attorneys next year. Is this tying us into a long-term agreement with Fishback?
Fishback is our engineering firm?
I understand that.
Yep.
What?
Sorry, you mentioned attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant consulting services. So I see that we have not-to-exceed budget of $7,500. That's really cheap today. How long does this tie us in for, then?
So it'll certainly get us through this project. And then, and Susan may be on the phone, I'm not sure. And my understanding is then if we have to go above and beyond, if the if the grant is actually approved by the state, we will then have to get a second proposal to help us through that that process. So.
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't a rubber stamp for the next five years or 10 years?
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Susan's here, if you'd like to hear from her as well, so.
I'd just like to add that we've had a lot of success with Fishback. We've seen Susan present before. She's extremely knowledgeable, and I think it's really fair and generous that they put a not-to-exceed amount on. And I think Fishback has done a, you know, a great job and already understands this project, which is really critical, I think, for Robinson's success. So, you know, I think I'll be in support if somebody wants to make a motion to approve a Fishback.
I'd just note that Susan has been fantastic at the Brownfield Redevelopment Authorities and has the background with the state, just listening to her and making a difficult subject make a lot of sense. But I would note that this, and this is not anything about you, Susan, this is just a standard subcontractor agreement. But the the not-to-exceed, but then we've also still got the 10% fee in addition to that goes to subcontractors. So maybe it's unavoidable, and especially with government, but it just seems like we need to keep a close eye because the cost, what I've seen easily creep up. And Susan's been fantastic, but I wouldn't give a blanket. I think we have been a fantastic client to Fishback. Manager Swayze?
Yeah, I would note because of the specialized nature of these services, this will actually be partitioned out in the budget. In fact, eventually, the board will have to approve a budget amendment to create a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Fund, because the money that's captured would have to go into that fund and then be used to pay the loan. So there'll be a specific line item where the board will be able to track every month exactly how much is being spent with Fishback on this project.
And then we saw contractors and everything.
Any payment that goes to Fishback, correct?
Thank you.
Well, with that clarification from Ben, I move to approve Fishback as the consulting service for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority project.
Support.
Some motion by trustee McDonald to review, or excuse me, to approve the consulting services of Fishback for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority as written, supported by Treasurer Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Corhorn. And thank you, Susan. Yep. Item 042 2021 Township Legal Services Bid. The board has received and had an opportunity to review all eight proposals that were submitted in response to our request for proposals for legal services. Manager Swayze, want to walk us through the process and the considerations?
Great, thank you. So we are currently served by Varnum LLP to provide general counsel legal services to township, as well as some specialized services. Attorney John Huff has served as the township attorney, while various other Varnum attorneys have represented the township in their areas of expertise. We've utilized other firms in the past in cases of specialized needs. Most recently, we've utilized Dickinson Wright for DDA and bond council work. We've utilized Bloom Sluggett for planning and land use lawsuit where Varnum has had to recuse itself due to a conflict in the case and for special counsel in relation to the Lareway Lake and Thornapple River SAD projects due to their subject expertise. So in February, the Township Board approved the issuance of an RFP for Township Legal Services. The RFP was issued in the first week of March, and the proposals were due April 8. The request for proposals was sent directly to several known law firms with municipal practices, as well as being posted on the township website and being sent to the Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys for distribution. So the township received a total of eight proposals, which are detailed in the staff report. I also want to note that the township did receive correspondence from Varnum, which declined to submit a proposal citing a continued conflict with the Gerald Ford International Airport. So the proposals that we received were from Bloom Sluggett Morgan, Kiriko, Dickinson Wright, however, for bond counsel and economic development work only, Faheesh Schultz, Burzick, and Rhodes, Foster, Swift, Collins, and Smith, Micah Myers, Miller, Cadfield, Paddock, and Stone, again, only for bond counsel, Schiffman, Carlson, and Smith, Howie Rice, and Rogan. So at their April meeting, the Personal Finance Committee conducted a first review of proposals, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But after reviewing the proposal, the committee selected three proposals to conduct interviews, Bloom Sluggett, Foster, Swift, and Micah Myers. Each firm was given approximately an hour to answer questions from the committee. So in your packet, I did include the issued RFP for legal services, an RFP cost comparison sheet, and the legal services bid from all the respondents, which was majority, majorily responsible for the 400 or 500 pages in your packet this week. So the Personal Finance Committee did review each of their proposals. Uh, so the Personal Finance Committee did review each of their proposals in detail before making a decision on which firms to interview. Uh, and as stated in the R F P, the Personal Finance Committee focused on various items when evaluating the proposals. Uh, so of course, verification of the basic information, the completeness of the proposal, uh, the responsiveness to all elements outlined in the request for a proposal, the experience and qualifications of the Township Attorney and all team member attorneys identified, the experience and results in performing the services desired by the township, and of course, a cost proposal that was advantageous to the township as well. So after conducting interviews with Bloom Sluggett, Foster Swift and Micah Myers, the Personal Finance Committee forwarded to the Township Board a recommendation to select Foster Swift, uh, for legal counsel. Uh, so there was a couple of things that were important to them. Uh, again, uh, price, uh, they were, uh, in a sweet spot. We had prices as high as three hundred and five dollars an hour, prices as low as a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Uh, but they thought that the, the billable price for, uh, Foster Swift was appropriate, uh, and is actually, uh, the exact same that we are currently experiencing. Uh, the comprehensive nature of their services, the committee felt that, uh, because of what we do, we needed to, uh, we need to select a firm that can provide all the services that are, are required. Uh, there were good-served firms that they interviewed that, uh, did not, uh, supply what they felt was a full suite of services. Uh, and they really wanted a quote-unquote one-stop shop for, uh, for legal services. Experience obviously is very important. Not only did they want a, an experienced, uh, Township Attorney and firm, uh, but they wanted one that had an extensive municipal client base as well, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, obviously you want, uh, somebody that is doing, uh, what we, we need to do, uh, which is, uh, important. And they want me to be able to demonstrate that they have done municipal work extensively in the past, uh, but also because of our issues with, uh, conflicts. As we all know, uh, Varnum has had a conflict out of several big issues in the township, uh, recently. Uh, and the more established a, uh, core municipal practices, uh, and the less, uh, ancillary work that they do, uh, the less likely that it is that, uh, the firm will be conflicted out of any, uh, future, uh, issues. Uh, I do want to obviously give the, the committee an opportunity, uh, to, to talk as well. Um, but I will note that our, in our current budget, we've budgeted approximately fifty thousand dollars over all departments for legal services. Actual costs fluctuate during the fiscal year, uh, and greatly depend on the activities for that year. And as I mentioned, uh, the cost proposal from Foster Swift is, uh, the same as Varnum. So I'm not anticipating any needed budget amendments needed solely for the reason of changing legal counsel. Uh, though if we do get to a point where we've used extensive legal counsel, then obviously we have to do a budget amendment for, for that. Uh, so I will note that Michael Hormier, who will serve as Township Attorney from Foster Swift, is here to answer any questions the Board may have. And with that, I would turn it back over to Supervisor Les Prince for the committee to give their, uh, analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. The Personal Finance Committee, who, who chose to interview three of the eight firms, um, when we narrowed it down, and I, I can defer to trustee Kessel and, um, Treasurer Pierce, who can elaborate on the process, but.
We, we did. Uh, we had to be careful, um, that we consider everybody. So all the Board tonight got all eight, uh, R F Ps to review. Um, it was kind of fun, uh, grilling attorneys instead of having them grill us for a change. We, uh, we put Mike through a lot of questions. Uh, he brought a team of people, uh, with him that handled things, uh, uh, bonding issues, uh, legal issues that we had to go to court. Uh, we had concerns about, um, how to develop, uh, S A D's, uh, outright ordinance. And each of the three people that were here, um, with us last Thursday afternoon were very qualified and answered all of our questions. Um, we, we interviewed, um, uh, Micah Myers too, and, uh, they had the same thing. Um, all the, all services that we, uh, require and some outsourced now, we could do with them. Um, and, and we also interviewed, uh, Bloom Sluggett. We, we all on the Board know Cliff, been happy with his services, but they don't, uh, provide employment. They don't, uh, provide bond counseling. And so we thought, you know, it's best for the township if we can do it all with one firm. So after, uh, Grace and Ken and I, uh, spending an hour with each, um, we, uh, we selected one that we felt we could do all the work for us. And, uh, and we came up with Foster Swift as a recommendation. Uh, their main, um, uh, person, Mike, you can comment on Anne again. I think you said she was a managing, uh, member of the firm?
She is the firm president.
Firm president, also lives in Cascade, so she has familiarity with us, which we thought was helpful too.
I was impressed with the fact that they have ninety-some odd attorneys in Michigan, five or six local offices and their Grand Rapids offices on the Belt Line. They only have one, one municipal client, I think, in Kent County, to date.
We have several, uh, one of which is Township. Uh, we do some work for the city of Grand Rapids as well and other municipal entities.
But they have the ability to draw on that other five or six offices if they have to for expertise. And, uh, it just came, came across as very competent, very able to deliver the services. I think we ought to open it up to the other trustees to, to make sure you have questions about processes.
I just want to say I looked over all of them as well, and I felt that Foster Swift was extremely thorough and comprehensive, so.
Yeah, I, uh, I read through all the proposals. I did enjoy the reading on Foster Swift, the different attorneys and specialties that they have. I've had some experience with a couple of the other law firms that you guys did interview, uh, when I was on the Board in Caledonia. I still like Foster Swift, so, good job.
trustee McDonald?
I have a question. It's probably for Ben. Ben, do we have any, uh, transition issues? Uh, any outstanding cases that we're working on, and how will we transition that to, or will we need to transition that to a new legal service?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, upon approval of the contract tonight, I think I'll, uh, sit down, uh, with Supervisor Les Prince over the next day or two and, and work on that transition plan. Uh, I've started to put some thought to it. Uh, I think that obviously we need to, uh, have a, a formal introduction, uh, to the, the Board members, and I think we can do that through the committee structure. Uh, so I would anticipate that each of the committees over the next, uh, month would have an opportunity to, uh, meet the legal team. I think for any new issues going forward, it's real easy. Um, you know, we just, uh, move with Foster Swift. If we have any existing issues, um, you know, Varnum has been very clear that they would, they would participate in that transition. So if there needs to be a transition of documents or information, uh, we can, we can do that as well. So we still need a final design, and I'm sure Foster Swift has been through this as well. So I'm sure they can provide us some guidance as to what some of those, uh, good, uh, transition pieces might be as well.
Just, Tom, just to, uh, make that little, it's transition as smooth as possible. I think that, take into account, because we need general counsel right now, Varnum, as soon as possible. We needed him yesterday. I think that the, the approval of any law firm tonight should specify that the new, that the, the appointed general counsel is general counsel effective immediately, but then include, uh, that that would not impact the ongoing legal work that we have already with existing firms. So just so that we're covered in Cascade, because I know as issues come up, this isn't, uh, we don't need any more lag time.
And I noticed that Varnum sent a very professional, nice letter to us, and they're very professional. They're not going to try to stick it to us. So I mean, I'm very comfortable moving forward. I just wondered if we had any outstanding situations or issues where there would be some transitional issues. And like, Ben, and you have pointed out, we'll, we'll address those.
Like the Brownfield Development I laws are, right, something we'll turn over right away.
Well, that was first on my mind, yeah.
And, and more than just looking at the dollar amount per hour, you don't know what you don't know. And then when you realize there's a lacky or there's a need there, the, the one thing about Foster Swift and, and also Bloom Sluggett, but, and a lot of great candidates, but Foster Swift with their breadth of experience and then their depth, that I think Cascade's going to get the most, um, effective and best value with just straightforward answers. They know, and they did it in such a great way. They, the law, practical application, and then, and then advice. And it was just refreshing and, and really efficient. So if you, you can look at the hourly rate, but then the real issue is how fast can they answer your question? And then more importantly, can they get it right? So we had some really good choices, and I think frankly, it's really tough because Cliff Bloom's firm has been fantastic to Cascade and really filled a, a need, um, and it was a really tough call. But Foster Swift has the full range. So I'm excited to have really good counsel that I feel like has Cascade's back as an advocate and minimal conflicts.
One other thing that they brought up, and it was the only one that brought it up, is they had a client that had a, a computer glitch. Or, uh, I think they had a attack on their computer system, which is not something you wouldn't normally call law firm about. But they had, uh, someone on staff that was able to work with that client and resolve that problem. And that client didn't have to go outside to search for somebody to do it. And, uh, that was something that was value-added, for sure.
If we make this, we accept this motion, do we, can we start to, start tomorrow? Or do we have to wait for an engagement letter to decide?
Did you bring one with you, Mike?
I did not, um, but I could get you one tomorrow. So, uh, I don't worry about, well, you know, if the, uh, if the Board approves a motion, uh, the engagement letter is secondary to me. If you need work done, call my office, we'll get it done.
I move we appoint Swift.
Foster Swift?
To be our general counsel and legal, provide legal services.
Support.
It's a motion by, uh, Treasurer Pierce to appoint Foster Swift effective immediately as general counsel, supported by trustee Kessel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much, Mr. Homier, and we really look forward to, um, working with you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, and we and our team looks, uh, forward to working with you as well.
We, we enjoyed being able to pump you for all the legal advice that we won't get billed for, and I think it put us really ahead. But after we've milked that, we still think we've grown the most bang for our buck. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was weird to take legal advice from a woman, in, in the silly way, you know, I mean, younger women, you're used to this salty, well, salt and pepper hair and men, but.
Anne Serink has been there, uh, two years longer than I have been. But she is, um, the first, uh, female president in our firm in a hundred and nineteen years. So, uh, she's very good at what she does. She's in my municipal practice group, and I'm the practice group chair, but she is effectively my boss. So, um, but she's very knowledgeable, uh, concentrates on a lot of the O M A and FOIA issues. So, uh, Clerk Slater, you will, I'm sure, have some contact with Anne. She's very good at what she does.
I'm looking forward to, uh, her demeanor and professionalism rubbing off a little bit. So that'll be a good, good relationship that we hope to jump into. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item zero four three, twenty twenty one, Consider Outdoor Gathering Permit for Watermark Properties.
Great, thank you. So Cascade Township has received a request from Watermark Properties for an outdoor gathering permit, uh, for various events throughout the month of May, uh, on the property adjacent to the Watermark Country Club. The stated number of attendees is between two hundred and three hundred. Uh, and as you know, we have our outdoor gathering ordinance that requires a permit from the township for any gathering, outdoor gathering over two hundred people. Typically, they hold all of their events inside at the Watermark Country Club, uh, however, due to the, uh, uh, the orders that I referenced earlier. Uh, so not only does the indoor order, in effect, the twenty-five people, though not for public meetings anymore, uh, they still have an outdoor, uh, requirement of three hundred or less as, as well. So, um, we reviewed the application for the outdoor gathering permit and noise permit from Watermark Properties and offered the proper requirements. Uh, they do need to apply for and receive any necessary permits for temporary structures, uh, from the building department. Uh, sometimes residents forget that even if it's a tent, if you're using it to house people, uh, you have to go through the right permit process to make sure it's safe. So, and they've done this before, um, so they, they know that requirements as well. Uh, the proposed requirements will be reviewed with the applicant, and the applicant has to abide by all the recommendations. We've re-approved similar requests from Watermark Properties in the past, and they've been, all been held without incident. Uh, there's no financial implications for the Township approving the outdoor gathering permit. Uh, and with that, uh, staff is recommending that the application from Watermark Properties for an outdoor gathering permit for various events and may be approved.
Thank you.
Ben, have we, we received any complaints in the past?
No, we have not received any complaints in the past. Uh, they did do one outdoor gathering last year, uh, and they had held several the year before. So, um, I do anticipate that, uh, they're going to do this on a month-by-month basis. Um, originally, uh, they talked about applying for maybe the whole summer. Uh, and I think that they would like to see, obviously, the state, um, uh, regulations rolled back so they can move back inside. Uh, from the township's perspective, I think it makes sense for us to go month to month as well, just so if there are issues, we can address them before the next group is approved.
Motion to approve? Support.
It's a motion to approve the outdoor gathering permit for Watermark Properties, offered by Treasurer, excuse me, um, trustee Kessel. Support by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eleven, Public Comments. Article ten. In theory, right? Okay. Anyone wishing? That's okay. Anyone wishing to speak? I see at least one hand up. Assistant manager Fast can bring the microphone over, or you're welcome to, come to the podium. And then following in-person comments, we welcome anyone who's watching remotely too.
Hi, everyone. My name is Suzie N Ward. I'm a resident, and I always look forward to my Cascade connections. Um, but I have to say that the kids outside in masks was pretty alarming to me. Um, I, I don't think common sense dictates that, and I think it kind of propagates fear in, in an already fearful situation. So my ask is going forward, that when we put kids in a picture, we get to see their faces, not masks. And so I did some homework after I saw this picture. And in front of each of you, I made copies for, um, Stanford data. It's current, it's peer-reviewed, and it's on file at the National Institute of Health that shows that the masks do not prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. And it, um, also shows that people actually can be harmed by wearing a mask. So if you want to wear a mask, that, that's great. But I also wanted to bring, uh, an expert in to talk about the mask a little bit in hopes that we can, maybe as a community, have common sense approaches to the mandates that are going on indefinitely, once we all know the truth. And again, if, if people want to wear a mask, that's great, but putting kids in masks outside is, is not, I, I think, helpful to anybody. And so I'd like to introduce, um, after doing the research and giving, getting the study for you, I also did some research, and we do have a local person who's an expert. And any additional minutes that I leave on the table, I hope that you'll give to her. Her name is Tammy Clark. She's an OSHA environmental health and safety professional with over fifteen years of experience in the field of occupational safety and health. Tammy is a court-approved subject matter expert on P P E, respiratory protection, health and safety, and has worked as a legal, legal expert witness in several court cases related to these subjects. Tammy holds a B S in business and construction health and safety. She holds several industry certifications, occupational health and safety, environmental health and safety, and emergency medicine. Tammy's work has included field inspections, testing hazardous environments, training management and employees, and teaching in the university setting. She has sat on many health professional industry boards and has been involved in preparing pandemic response plans and emergency response plans. Tammy is passionate about providing relevant, accurate, and timely information to her clients and the public. And her work has been acknowledged with several awards and recognitions. Tammy was named one of the most influential women in West Michigan by the Grand Rapids Business Journal in twenty eighteen, nominated again in twenty twenty, and her business, Tammy Clark Companies LLC, was also nominated a top women-owned business in twenty nineteen. So without further ado, I'll bring the microphone over to Tammy. Thank you very much.
I'm actually going to use the podium because I've got something to read. So I don't know if I should just leave this up there. Who wants to take this?
Thank you.
Thank you for your introduction, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I've been very, very concerned with what I've been seeing. Thank you for your introduction and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I've been very, very concerned with what I've been seeing happening from the national, state, and local levels. And I have encouraged, as a occupational and environmental health and safety professional, I have encouraged everyone to get involved in this fight because what is going on is so revisionist from the agencies that we see dictating these mandates right now from my OSHA to MDHHS. So let me just start out by saying, on October 2nd, 2020, the Michigan State Supreme Court declared Governor Whitmer's actions in relying on the 1945 Emergency Powers of Governor Act to override the legislature and declare a continuing state of emergency to be a violation of the Michigan State Constitution. In a landmark four to three decision, the state's highest court ruled that Whitmer's use of the 1945 law, quote, "is in violation of the constitution of our state because it purports to delegate to the executive branch the legislative powers of state government, including its plenary police powers, and to allow the exercise of such powers indefinitely," end quote. The court then ruled the law to be unconstitutional in its entirety due to the violation of the system of checks and balances established in both our state and national government. The court admonished Whitmer, telling her to go back and work with the legislature for any continuing declarations, restrictions, and mandates. Whitmer, in response, completely ignored the orders of the high court, putting her in contempt of court. She stated that her self-declared state of emergency and all associated 193 executive orders, more than any other governor in America, would in fact remain in place for 21 more days. She has yet to work with the legislature on any continuing COVID-19 emergency orders, mandates, or restrictions. She defiantly thumbed her nose at the state Supreme Court and continues to rule Michigan unilaterally as a dictator, controlling every single aspect of the lives of Michigan citizens. This is not only illegal, it is an abuse of power that has had devastating and long-lasting effects on the economy and the lives of Michiganders. Governor Whitmer has continued to rule the state of Michigan as a dictator by focusing her actions not on working with the legislature. Rather, she simply pivoted and continued her tyrannical rule by weaponizing the state agencies of my OSHA and MDHHS. All the while, she herself has not abided by the mandates and restrictions she herself has imposed on we, the people. My OSHA is guilty of revisionism, and I know this firsthand from my 15 years as an OSHA credentialed expert working with this agency, now enforcing, quote, "rules" that are not standards and are in total contradiction to their own PPE and respiratory protection standards. These, quote, "rules" are also based on fraud as there is no emergency. Let me state that again. There is no emergency. They are putting over burdensome requirements on employers and have turned on the very population this agency was created to protect. The blanket one-size-fits-all mask mandates they are enforcing not only violate their own existing regulations, they are also creating a greater hazard due to prolonged mask wearing. The wearing of face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. The negative health effects include cross, self, and fomite contamination, which I will not get into and explain because it's very scientific and technical, increased carbon dioxide levels, decreased oxygen levels, exacerbated pulmonary and cardio health conditions, hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, headaches, increased blood acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, nausea, decline in cognitive performance, increased risk for lung, skin, mouth, and eye viral and bacterial infections, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression, all proven scientifically, which you will read in the Stanford study found on the National Institutes of Health website that you have all been given, and many more studies going back to the 1970s. So much inaccurate information is being promulgated by our, quote, "health authorities," none of which are credentialed in pathogen protection, PPE or respiratory protection. They have abandoned the typical multidisciplinary approach to pandemic response and infectious disease control and have left out the only professionals who are credentialed to speak on pathogen protection, industrial hygienists, environmental and occupational safety, health, and compliance professionals. We have abandoned accepted pandemic response plans for COVID-19 alone. We have never utilized face masks in pandemic response because we know from decades of tests and credible scientific studies that face masks, surgical masks, and even N95 respirators do not stop the spread of respiratory infectious diseases. OSHA's own hierarchy of safety and controls is also being ignored by the same agency. PPE is always the last measure of control. Yet they went right to PPE and told us all to mask up with no training, no health risk assessment, no fit testing, and no rating verification that that PPE will protect you. I can say this confidently because I have sat on pandemic boards. I have sat on infectious disease boards. I have helped to write pandemic response plans. We, including hospital systems, have violated every protocol and their own pandemic response plans because of this virus. I'd like to know why. MDHHS, oh, excuse me, my OSHA does not have the authority to dictate what business customers do or do not do. The only authority they have under the law is to regulate worker safety and health. This is an employer-employee relationship only. This agency is overstepping their authority and abusing their powers. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services does not have the power to dictate anything other than preventing meetings or gatherings in a time of emergency. Anything outside of this is also an overstep of their authority and an abuse of power. Neither of these agencies have the authority to mandate, quote, "emergency rules unless there is a true state of emergency." Governor Whitmer was reprimanded by the state Supreme Court for not working with the legislature to declare a true state of emergency and establish correlating guidance, as is Michigan law. She has continued to keep restaurants and bars locked down and restricted when we know from contact tracing that less than 4% of all COVID positive cases can be traced to restaurants and bars. Over 30% of Michigan restaurants and bars have now closed their doors permanently, devastating our economy and the lives of the business owners and the employees who work in this industry. The restaurant industry is the backbone of our economy. It has been decimated with many still struggling to survive. Our schools have been mandated to require children and staff to wear masks 100% of the time, including while practicing and playing sports. This is incredibly inappropriate and downright dangerous. And where's the science and data for this decision? I have asked for it via FOIA. Do you know what I received by Robert Gordon? Nothing but op-eds, opinion pieces, and biased research. Not one credible piece of information, science test, or research, RCT. Not one. Two days later, he resigned when we made this public. And where is the science and data for this decision? We would all like to know. We know children, for the most part, do not develop COVID symptoms. If they do, they very rarely develop serious or long-lasting symptoms. The flu affects our children and teens much more severely than COVID does. We also know from contact tracing that children are not spreading COVID-19. So I ask you, where's the emergency? Viruses are not new in society. Coronaviruses are not new in society. We have dealt with Ebola, MERS, bird flu, swine flu, AIDS, SARS, and many others. But the response to this particular virus is downright criminal. Governor Whitmer's contempt of court and illegal actions have led to the deaths of thousands, including the most vulnerable in our population. Thousands of our senior citizens died and continue to die as a direct result of her orders to place COVID-infected patients in nursing homes and her later veto of a bill passed by both the House and the Senate that would prevent any more patients from being placed in nursing homes. That caused even more deaths. Our elderly loved ones are still isolated from their families and are locked away in the most cruel and unusual way. In the military and prison systems, solitary confinement is considered cruel and unusual punishment and is only used in the most serious of situations. Yet our loved ones continue to die alone.
I understand this is really important and I'm not trying to cut you off, just trying to balance.
Yeah.
Technically, we learned that you can't from our legal interviews with but I just, it's okay. I don't want to cut you off, but I just don't want to.
That's okay. I'll finish.
Thank you.
Yes. So we are not in a pandemic by any state. We have nothing to prove we're in a pandemic or an emergency. So for the township to continue to go along with a governor and agencies that we know are acting outside of their authority illegally and criminally makes you complicit. I think it is important that you allow the citizens of this township to make their own personal responsible choices for their family's health and safety. Open up your businesses, open up your restaurants, give your citizens back their choice, and unmask your children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Merlin?
I just wanted to comment on the various resolutions today about the Brownfield development or redevelopment. I thought the bylaws result was excellent. The added provision that allows the bylaws to be redone because they're still, in my view, not sufficiently protective of the township's interest is a good one. I think with regard to the grant application, I understand why the authority found it so easy to approve because who is ultimately liable for that loan? It is Cascade Township. And who pledges their state shared revenues? Cascade Township to pay it off. So what I'd like to ask the board to do is to watch very carefully how it gets implemented such that our interests are protected, which takes us to the third issue, which is the Fishbeck proposal. I find the Fishbeck proposal to be somewhat similar on a much smaller scale to the progressive issue we had with the town hall where they, in their letter back to us, indicated they were owner-oriented, not necessarily acting in the best interest of the owner because their financial interests were not totally aligned with ours. That $7,500 fix fee or cap fee actually is a very attractive number. It does not include the 10% upcharge on the use of subcontractors. That was mentioned tonight at the board meeting, but no one held the Fishbeck person's feet to the fire and asked when and if they intended to use subcontractors and how much, because that would be over and on top of the 7,500. Second, it charges 10% upcharge on expenses. I'd like to know what Fishbeck has historically charged for expenses. Do they charge meals? Where all of a sudden we end up paying a 10% upcharge on their meal costs? Do they charge it on copies of, that they make in their shop? If that's the case, I'm sure they have a profit margin built in on their copy charges, which we then just add another 10% to. So again, I think we're in a situation where we have an owner's representative who is owner-oriented. And I want to make sure we make that this board is highly diligent in making certain the interests of Cascade and all of its citizens are considered and not just the interests of an owner-oriented consultant. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. See Mr. Dion in the back row? Welcome.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank you for holding in-person meetings. I think it's nice to get back to business. I think the community has been looking forward to that and hopefully we'll see more of our community here as it progresses. I have a quick question about the Brownfield, interesting subject. Who internally manages Brownfield here at Cascade Township? How is that managed? How is it disclosed to the public? Are there maps? What's the history? Can I get a, just a brief background on that?
Manager Swayze, have a, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Brownfield Authority is, the Brownfield is managed by the Brownfield Authority with staff assistance from the township manager and economic development director, as well as counsel from the, our legal counsel and advice from the consultant that was approved tonight.
Are all the areas disclosed? I've never seen a map noting all the Brownfields. Is that something that's publicly known?
So the way the Brownfield works is it comes into the Brownfield on a project-by-project basis. So at the start of the, the Brownfield, the Brownfield plan will encompass only the Robinson Dental property. Any property in the township is eligible to apply to be part of the Brownfield plan, but you have to meet the state regulations in order to actually then be included in the plan.
And how? What, what properties are part of it? Now, we've got the Robinson Dental, any other?
So, so, so any property in the township can apply to be part of the Brownfield plan, but you only do it on an application-by-application basis. So because Robinson Dental has applied, we'll now work on developing a Brownfield plan that includes them. If somebody else identifies that they're an eligible property and wants to apply to be in the Brownfield plan, they can do that as well. So the properties only come in on a property-by-property basis, but anybody in the township is eligible to apply to be, have a Brownfield plan for their property.
So I'm looking at a property. How do I know if it's Brownfield?
So you, you would, if you go onto the state database, there's a state database on the Eagle website that shows all the contained, the known contaminated properties in the township. So a lot of times that's related to underground storage tanks or known entities. You can become eligible by having an obsolete property. So if you have something that's functionally obsolete, you can go through a process with the township that allows you, the township to declare it functionally obsolete. A lot of times the Brownfield will cover costs then for, for tearing that down. You can go through the state land bank, so there isn't currently any township properties in the state land bank. But if there was, somebody that could purchase that property would ultimately be eligible for that, for that as well. But I would encourage anybody that thinks that they have a property that's eligible to make contact with the township and we can help with that investigation.
Thank you. And the most direct contact would be either my manager Swayze or Mr. Farm.
Okay, so maybe the township could be more proactive in this and go out and publish a list. It can be confidential in your office, but it would be nice that the community knows where those properties are at. And then in the case of, you know, the case that we heard tonight, that, that, I mean, it's great for developers to know that there's money available for this because that's really not been made available that I, that I know of until tonight. So I'm kind of wondering.
I'm not aware of a, it's not that, I don't think we have that process in place, but it's a great question and.
So we're starting the process? Is that what we're doing today?
Brand new. No, since I started, yes. I would say the last 12 months. But there's no set property map or anything like that. So manager, manager Swayze can go into all these details.
Okay, but there isn't, there are addresses and we could merge. I thought you just said there was addresses. So we can pull them up by the zip code and look at them. Okay. So again, it'd be nice if you'd pull those up and merge those into your database so that you're aware of them because I'm aware of a few about there and I see Earth moving around and I always wonder who to call and what's going on and are somebody looking out for the township? So the reason I, I mention all of this is exactly that, that case. I, I don't want to snoop or, you know, it's really none of my business what they're doing, but it is the township's business knowing what they're doing. And if you know actively what your properties are contaminated, I think you can take a more active role if that contamination goes to a properly containment site or it just gets hauled off and put in some farmer's field to contaminate another site. So I think it's, I think it's great what you're doing. I just think that there needs to be a little bit more, a few more steps added here to control that those contaminations are managed properly. So I, I think it was great. What's going on with the Robinson Dental site?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dion. Sir, would you like the microphone or podium?
Hello. Hello, my name's Mike Loyk and I live in the area with my wife and four children. I did want to do some follow-up on what Tammy did talk about regarding the mask protocols. I think she brought some really great information. I really hope that you look through what she's provided and help sort of listen to what she's talking about. Really believe there's some really important information that's maybe not necessarily known. So to start off, certainly I want to pay respects to folks that in this world have dealt with COVID, whether they've lost somebody or are suffering. But if you think about some of what Tammy talked about, it's the other things that are affected that, that deal with when you have certain restrictions. So I think the thing, in, as far as this community, thinking about that reaction, again, following these rules, really ask yourself, is this reaction helpful? There's a lot to learn from these things that Tammy talked about and other professionals that really understand these, these types of things. And as a father, I've, I've actually personally had struggles with some of the protocols. It's why I actually struggle with wearing a mask. My, some of my kids actually have major issues. They'll come home from school and say, Dad, I have a headache, really bad headache. So there's a lot to it. So those there's a lot of disabilities that you just don't hear about. So I'm just wanting to recognize as a, you know, public part of the community that this is really important. You just don't hear about the other side of it. So again, is our reaction helpful? So what can you do in your role? Can you really look into what these things are being talked about to really understand what's helpful? And thinking about our reaction to these. So that's all I would ask is really. Think about what she said and others that have looked at these that are from a professional standpoint. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I pass the sound? Okay, hi, I'm Mary Vanderveen and I live on Alaska Ridge. I just have some questions regarding the broadband internet surface or service on Alaska Ridge. Over the years, different members in our neighborhood have come to Cascade and said. How can you help us get internet to our homes? We don't have internet. And just hasn't worked out. But recently, somebody logged on to the Michigan Community Financial Board, looked up Cascade's performance. I guess you report to that. And his reports that Cascade has had 100% internet service since 2009. And those I've lived on Alaska Ridge since 1995 and we we do not have internet. Internet wasn't invented anyway then. Anyway, you tax our homes like we have internet and we don't. So I think that's a pretty big oversight. So fast forward to now it's COVID. All the kids are home, online schools, online work, online church, online everything. It's been a real struggle. I know that there were CARES funds that came to Cascade. And the the board voted on spending the funding on remote work expenses, COVID equipment. COVID supplies, teleconferencing, all really good things, election worker hazard pay, public safety payroll expense. But then when through the Freedom of Information Act, we find out that that funding went to Dominion voting services too. And I don't think that the COVID pay was really. Designed for Dominion in particular. So anyway, I was wondering where the report states that those funds can be used for voting machines. And whatnot. So I understand that there's another CARES funding package coming. It's bigger and I'm hoping that it's I hope it's reasonable to expect that Alaska Ridge can finally get some assistance for their internet. Thanks.
Thank you. We would be happy to also manager Swayze and myself, and I'm sure other board members outside of this meeting too, to meet with residents about. The internet and other issues. Any other residents wishing to speak in person? Anyone remote?
If anyone joining us remotely would like to address the board, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're joining us via telephone. There are no raised hands at this time Supervisor Les Prince.
Thank you. That concludes this portion of public comment. Article 12, Article 11, excuse me, manager comments. We have an update on the.
Yep, so I have a couple of updates for you. The first one I want to talk about is the PFAS grant that the Township Board approved the application for. Back in January and myself and Supervisor Les Prince were able to attend a meeting with the affected homeowners last week. Not only affected homeowners, but the various jurisdictions that are responsible for the investigation that's going on, including Eagle. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Kent County Health Department as well. So we were supposed to hear about the grant by April 15th. April 15th has come and gone and obviously we haven't heard anything yet, or I would have been blowing up your phones. But we did get a couple snippets of what I thought was really good information during that community homeowner meeting. We had Abby Hendershot, any of you that may have come to our PFAS meetings in this room over a couple of years will recognize Abby as the. Former Grand Rapids area director of Eagle. She has moved on now and is actually the director of M Part at the state level. Which is a huge boon for us can now the person responsible for PFAS response in the entire state is intricately involved in our project as well. So we were super happy to hear about that, but a little insider information. Our our application rose to, I don't know if she said the top of the list or around the top of the list, but. It was very clear that we had one of the most favorable grant applications. We also got an email from Eagle asking for some clarifications because our project was in the funding range. And they wanted to clarify a few of the expenses. So I think we will have an announcement sooner rather than later. That should be good news. What I can't tell you at this point is what that means, you know, because we didn't know if they were going to take the. Top couple of projects and fund them at 100% of what they asked for, or if they were going to take all the fundable projects and divide the money up among them. So I don't know if it'll be a $5 million grant award or $3 million grant award or 1 million, but I anticipate good news coming sometime over the next couple of weeks. And then the interim, the infrastructure committee will be meeting next week and we think we're going to start having a conversation about. Okay, now that we know that there's potentially some funding coming, how do we make this project happen sooner rather than later? So good movement on that. Excited about that project. The other item that I wanted to update on you Supervisor Les Prince mentioned at the beginning. We did today about five hours ago, get a legal opinion from Township Special Legal Counsel on deficiencies in the. Special Assessment District that was approved both for Laroa Lake and Thornapple River earlier this year. So the letter, the legal opinion does identify some deficiencies specifically in the certification of the role. While the role was presented and adopted by the Township Board, there is also a specific statutory language that requires the. The role to be certified by the supervisor prior to that adoption and a legal council has determined that certification didn't happen. So I need a little bit more time to actually review the document and then to develop what a path forward would be with some recommendations to the board. I anticipate that that coming out soon. Then of course, the privilege and confidential legal opinion will be shared with all of the board members as well. Once Cliff has asked myself and Supervisor Les Prince to at least confirm the facts that are in there before it's distributed. So anticipate we'll have some direction at the next board meeting on that. The final item I have is there was a social media post over the weekend. In regards to a piece of property that the township has looked at in the past for a park. I know you guys all got copies of this email. One of the things that we have in our policy is that anybody that wants their comments. Read into the record and states though, when they provide us written comments, we read that into the record. So I know you guys got about 20 emails. You all have copies of that. I'll actually provide a copy of all the emails to Clerks Slater to include the supplements, but because there was four emails that specifically asked that they be read into the comments. It's proper protocol for us to read that into the comments now. So I'm going to do that. The first one is from Mary Derachi, who lives at 7470 30th Street Southeast. Dear Supervisor Les Prince and members of the board.